Is that to him?
Not that it was. But I did.
It should be here.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with the work session for the Wilmer City Council on Monday, May 22 at 5:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is to introduce new employee, Chris Kavine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to introduce our new IT technician who started through Chris Kavine. Come up, Chris.
Hello. I'm Chris. I come from, I was at Heritage Bank for 10 years and graduated from Wilmer, live out in Raymond. Glad to be a part of the team.
Excellent.
So far, Ross hasn't scared me out.
That's a good thing, right? All right, all right. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. We're glad you're with us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Well, welcome.
Rick, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. And I have an issue connecting here. Let's see.
Come and hook him up up here.
Counsel person, Plowman isn't here and he always does it for me, so.
That's over.
He's serious.
This is what you call on-the-job training, gifting, getting after it. So, right, exactly.
You know it's there somewhere.
Yeah. Go to the top one. We're glad you're with us. So, the next thing we have on the agenda is the presentation of the Robins Island Master Plan by Mr. Stuart Crosby of SRF Consulting. So, Stuart, thank you for making the long drive out to beautiful Wilmer, Minnesota. So, we're excited for your report.
Thank you. I have it on a thumb drive and I'm not sure, does anybody know if it's on this machine already or should I just?
I would just use your thumb drive.
What's that? Just use this?
Yeah, I would.
Judy, is it loaded? Do we know?
No one provided any information for me on my thumb drive, so if they have their own, they will have to use that.
Here it is, right here.
How quick that goes.
There.
Thank you so much.
So, Mayor, members of the council, this is the presentation of several months of effort for the Mayor's Task Force on the Robins Island Master Plan. And I just wanted to recognize those members right here that have worked for these several months on this project. And I think we've had several really great meetings. We also have had a really well-attended open house and got a lot of good public input on this project. And what I'd like to do is go through a few slides to talk about the project, our analysis.
Maybe we can introduce the public members, too, that were there.
Oh, absolutely.
They're in the back of the room there, so. So, Mr. Steve Lender is here. Thank you, Steve. Mr. James Miller is here. Gary Manzer served, along with Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Fagerly. So, as you can see, we had a very robust committee and we did some very good work. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is what I want to go through, project overview, the analysis that we went through, some of the ideas that came up during our process, the concepts, and then show you the recommended concept that the committee has put together. So, in 2015, the Park and Recreation Master Plan was put together. SRF worked on that and it included Robins Island as well as several other parks. That master plan was approved by the council. And shortly after that, as part of an outcome of that master plan, Robins Island received Regional Park Status from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. And that is the status that is needed to allow you to apply for legacy funding. And along that timeline, the Destination Playground was constructed in 2017, the same year that Wilmer received a legacy grant for additional improvements at Robins Island Regional Park. And it's because of that that the mayor initiated a master plan update because of the funding that was received and also because of the improvements of the playground and I think a desire to improve the park with those new initiatives already underway. So, that got us to the point where you pulled the task force together and we went through in our first meeting, several different discussions. One of those was to come up with some vision concepts. And really, what we want to do with this plan is to put together a master plan that actually is used and useful and really is a vision document for the park itself. Some of the things that came out, as you can see here, I've highlighted the words safety, access improvement, enhancement of the natural features. Make it an inclusive park that is available year-round for residents. Natural beauty and improvements to the water quality are two important things. This should be a destination park and serve as the city's central park. And I think very importantly, the committee wanted it to attract people and community was a word that came up many times. And so, it was with these ideas, these concepts, that we moved forward and we created several planning principles that guided the process for us. They included developing and maintaining a safe and inviting park, establishing zones of use in the park. And that's what we've done, as you'll see when we go through the preferred alternative or the concept. Preserve existing natural resources in the park, create a welcoming entrance, create logical circulation patterns for vehicles and pedestrians on separate alignments, and incorporate sustainable systems in all park buildings and facilities. So, these were the principles that guided our process. So, the analysis that we went through included looking at the overall regional park that includes the main portion of Robins Island Park, but Veterans Memorial, Hadeen, Rao, Thompson, and Sperryville. Those are all of the elements of the regional park. The focus of our work really did work and look specifically at the island. And you'll see that here in a moment. I put this 1955 aerial photograph in because, number one, it's very interesting to look at and you see that it truly was an island years ago. But also, it directed some of what can be done at the park in terms of, we feel, building, putting buildings in place. And so, when you look at this, the lower right side of the area is actually fill and is not a very suitable location for buildings. I mean, you certainly could put a building in there, it just costs a lot more to do that. And so, it's with this information and a lot of our other analysis that we went forward. We looked at the natural resources and what is there now, including the lawn, what we're calling savanna, which is really the nice, beautiful oak landscapes, the upland and the wetland areas. We looked closely at the existing park facilities, the playgrounds, access to the lake, the lawn and the sports areas, the beach, the boat accesses, parking lots, circulation, roads, and existing trails. And that's what you see right here in red, those circulations for both vehicles and pedestrians. Some of the issues and opportunities, we noted that there is a circular pattern right now, that vehicles can go in a one-way direction. But it's, it is, gets tight and it's dark. There are certain things that we felt we could improve, but some of the things that came out, we wanted to make sure that there is access to the lake year-round. And also, we want to create areas of opportunity that highlight the beach and the new playground as well. Some of the desired elements and features that came out of our process include maintaining an 18-hole disc golf course, improving the pedestrian and bicycle trail system, a concert venue and band shell for Rockin' Robins and other potentially large events. Also, a small amphitheater on a hillside that could be used for groups of up to a couple hundred people or smaller and could be rented out. Four-season multi-use building with restrooms, some three-season rooms or shelters, a staging area for food trucks, maintaining the boat launches, both motorized and non-motorized, sprucing up the entry with a monument, maintaining open lawn areas, winter use, including an ice rink and sledding and ski trails as well. So, some of the ideas that we looked at, we came up with a couple of different concepts. But with those concepts, these are some of the ideas, these outdoor amphitheaters you see on the upper left there. We looked at a couple of different ideas and examples as what you might do. The middle right there, those several pictures in the middle show ideas for different bandshells, larger stages that could house or could be used for the Rockin' Robins facilities. And we've taken that into consideration in our design as well. And then four-season park buildings that would be locations that you could have concessions, you could have restrooms and changing rooms for the beaches, you could have a community room that could be reserved and rented out. And it would serve the beach, it would serve the playground, and it could serve really as the home base for all park activities. Got some other pictures here of different things. I think, interestingly, on the bottom, the skating loop was something that came up and that's an exciting opportunity that we've carried through into the master plan. You'll see that not only do you have an outside skating area, a skating rink, but you actually have a loop that functions kind of as a skate trail. The light show and making sure that we have a facility that provides for winter light shows, as I know we have one being planned right now for Robins Island. So, we came up with two different concepts. We have Concept A and I'll go through Concept A and then Concept B. Concept A, as you can see here, highlights the vehicle and pedestrian access in two different ways. And what I'm highlighting here with this yellow dash line is where the vehicles will be going to get into the park. And really, it uses the west, southwest portion of the park and gets out to a turnaround, which is actually the existing turnaround that's out in the park right now. What this concept does is it focuses a lot of the activity in the park right here at the center where we have the main four-season building. This will serve, as I mentioned earlier, really as the park headquarters and has the shelter, the restrooms for the beach, but also concessions and a place to rent ice skates or kayaks or boats. We also are showing a separate three-season building right here that would have restrooms and picnic shelter. And that's located right next to the Destination Playground that is in place right now. That's one of the things that we've heard throughout our process is that that playground is attracting so many people and they don't have the facilities that they need when they're there. And so, having these two buildings would work very well together and serve separate purposes for the different elements of the park. The thing that this concept highlights is that you see all of the movement in the park for vehicles is really kept to one side and it opens up and keeps the rest of the park free of vehicle traffic. And we have trail, a trail circulation system there that allows people to go in and around to the different areas. It also maintains a large space for the disc golf course that would probably, several of those holes would have to be relocated, but there's ample space for that, for the golf course there. And as you can see, maybe a little bit hard on the projectors there, but in the large field on the right, at the top of it, is a little gray square. That is the stage for the Rockin' Robins area. And we designed the, one of this concept, actually both concepts, around the idea of having a large outdoor concert venue. And you can see a lot of smaller dots in there. Those represent the layout of the Rockin' Robins. And so, we took into consideration the needs for that type of an event where you have several thousand people that would be descending on the park. And we've done a couple of things in addition to showing what, how that circulation would happen. We have two different entrances, the primary entrance into the park. But when you have a large event like that, in the lower right is a separate entrance off the highway and that would allow traffic to be managed with an in-and-out flow, which we think would be very helpful. Concept B is slightly different and utilizes, generally speaking, a similar alignment of the roadway that's out there now. But instead of going out and around on the southwest side, it would go out and up around the backside of the park to the, to the roundabout you see at the very end, and then you would go back out the same way. So, it would be two-way traffic. And this, this, that's the yellow dash line, highlights that primary vehicle route. This does a couple of things. It obviously brings vehicles further into the park and provides for different locations for some of the picnic shelters. And that's one of the things that in both of these concepts, we looked at identifying three or so picnic shelters that could be rented out. They'd be built new and would be, I think, very desirable facilities for groups of different sizes to be able to rent. It includes a four-season shelter, as we talked about last time, as well as a three-season shelter that would be adjacent to the playground area. And after a lot of discussion, both at the open house and among our committee, we put together a recommended concept. And as you'll see here, the recommended concept really is representative of Concept A that we discussed before. It creates a strong core activity area that's in the center of the park and it keeps all of the parking east of the facilities. I think that's an important thing to consider, that we want to make sure that we have all the parking in one area and so that you minimize how traffic is going to impact the pedestrians. And we recognize that in this, in this, in this concept right here, there will be a location where people will have to cross the road to get from the beach area to the playground. But we felt that we could do that in a way that is done safely with a raised pedestrian crosswalk, maybe rapid flashing beacons, making it a stop situation for vehicles, but that the primary parking would be before that crossing. And so, the majority of people that came to use either the playground or the beach or any of the primary buildings would park and then walk in, trying to minimize that. And as you note, a lot of the parking for the larger events is kept out on the outside of the park closer to the highway so that we're trying to open up the park for all of the activities. The beach size has been slightly reduced from what's out there today, but it still is ample size. And we have four sand volleyball courts there as well. The, I think one of the things that's unique about this concept is that the old road, which goes around the backside, as you saw in Concept B, can be repurposed into a trail and really creates the backbone of the trail system. And I think that's a key point to talk about because if, when this concept gets developed, you've got a shorter road that will have to be constructed and then immediately, that older road could be used as a trail. So, I think it's a great cost-saving plus a big benefit. And one of the concerns of the committee was that there may be certain events where you want to have a vehicle circulation, like the Festival of Lights. And I think with a wider trail that is the old road, under certain conditions, you probably could repurpose that trail and have a one-way, event-only roadway. So, we thought that this, we felt this was a great concept to really take into consideration all of the interests and desires of the community. One of the key things we talked about was winter use and what does the park look like and how does it function in the winter? And as you can see here, that main building that's by the beach in light gray there has a skating facility, an outside skating area, as well as a meandering skate trail, which is proving to be a very popular element in a lot of other communities. Those blue lines that kind of wiggle around the park and out on the lake are representative of cross-country ski trails. And we have a sledding hill in there as well so that there are multiple different activities for, for winter use. I think it also is important to note that winter use could include paved trails that are plowed for wintertime walking. So, what do we like about this recommended concept? It creates, as I mentioned earlier, a core activity area, keeps the parking on the east side. I mentioned these are the reduced beach size. We do have a dock that, if you look here, is just to the west of the primary four-season building. And one of the key elements with that is we wanted to create really a triangle of activities between the playground, the beach, and the dock so that you have a lot of different nodes of enjoyment for many different people. You don't have to go too far into the park to use those. So, I think with that, Mayor, I'm happy to feel any questions or comments from the council.
Certainly. Stuart, thank you very much for the work that you were able to do. And I'm not sure if either the other two or three committee members want to make some comments before the council starts asking Stuart questions, but if you'd like to make some comments, certainly come to the podium. I think one of the good things was is that we had good community input. We had a public hearing where we had over 50 people show up to provide their input and I believe we met about eight times. And as Stuart had stated in his opening comments, we put the Mayor's Task Force together to get the ideas on what Robins Island could look like today, tomorrow, and into the future, understanding that not everything needed to be done today. And so, I'm very pleased with the results. I think that SRF has done a nice job, but certainly we want to hear from the council on what their thoughts are. Councilmember Fagerly and Councilmember Nelson also sat on the committee. And I thought it was interesting when we started talking about wanting it to be a walkable park and a park that's going to be used by all people, some of the creative ideas that came to the table. So, thank you for capturing those, bringing those to us. So, Steve or James, would you like to make any comments? Are you good? Okay. How about you, Gary?
Good.
Okay. Well, we'll bring it to the council and we'll see what the council has to ask. Also, our city administrator, Mr. Holland, was on that committee as well. So, Ike, I don't know if you have any comments you wish to make or are you, where are you at on that?
Well, I agree with everything that you've said so far and I think it's been a good effort. And, you know, I'm excited about it because too many parks are overloaded. And one of the things that I liked about this concept is that we separate the park from the pedestrians and the automobiles and we make it more nature-friendly. And I think that a lot of people will enjoy that. And so, I'm looking forward to working on it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fagerly, any comments you'd like to make about the process or any questions you have for Stuart?
No, it was a very good committee, a lot of good ideas. And I wasn't really agreeable to Plan A until I was told that they would keep the road open, which will be the walking path, but it could be opened up if the lights of the world, the festivals, are there so people can stay in their cars and drive around because that'd be very important for the elderly and the young children. But I think this is pretty safe design and the public would really like it.
Yeah, Councilman Fager, I agree with you. I think that our committee looked closely at what type of facility would be needed for the, and I keep forgetting the name of it.
Celebrate the World.
Yeah, Celebration of the World, the Lights, and also some of the other events. And so, when you think about what is needed with utilities and infrastructure for those, one of the values of this concept is that the existing utilities that are out there can to as much, I think that the facilities that are proposed are in the area of the existing facilities. Those may need to be upgraded as part of the project. But generally speaking, we're not looking to have to extend water or sewer into far new areas of the park.
Councilmember Nelson, any comments you'd like to make about the process or any questions you have?
No, I think I'm good with it. I would agree with Councilmember Fagerly in that I was an advocate, I think, to make sure that the island remained accessible to all ages and to all mobilities and those types of things. And so, I too was first in agreement with the Plan B versus this one. I think the concern that I have was the safety and that we are with where the Destination Playground is and where the majority of the people will be. But I think we've done a good job to work through those. And I think, too, also being able to keep that road open for possibilities for any kinds of special events or celebrate the Lights is a good thing. And also, just, I think we've done a good job balancing that we don't overload, that there are more places to be than just Robins Island. So, I'm pleased with the process that we worked through. I think we worked hard on it and you've done a great job putting the amenities on there that people have asked for, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. I think, as you know, because you served on both committees when we did the first master plan, I think one of Wilmer's greatest strengths is its park system and its incredible breadth of parks. And so, one of the values of this Robins Island concept is that it highlights the beauty and the activities that could happen at this park, but it doesn't detract from those other parks. So, you have a great recreation park for baseball and you have now with the new rice park improvements, the splash pad. So, I think this will become, as was mentioned in our, in our process, really, the city's, city, you know, the main central park. And I think it's going to be very exciting when it gets developed.
Thank you. Councilmember Palman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight and for the presentation. I was pleasantly surprised when I first got a look at these documents. In my day job, I look at conceptual plans for recreational facilities all day, literally all day, every day. And the quality of documentation and conceptual plan and design here is really good and it's consistent with or better than a lot of what I see coming from other engineering firms. So, impressed there.
Thank you.
I like the fact that the process was used, the committee process was used before it was brought here so that some of the lower-level details could have been ferreted out first. And now, we got heavier, you know, substance in front of us to gauge and it helps us to iron out, you know, instead of having 80 different configurations to ferret through at this table, it helps make our job a little bit easier. I also think that both options, maybe Concept B over A, but both of them are going to help utilize the full space because that's kind of one of the things that I believe is probably discussed at the committee level. But there is land out there that's underutilized. And if it's a piece of land that the city has and that we're paying to maintain and, you know, it's an asset, let's go ahead and let's use all of it. And I think, I think both concepts will let us do that and let us highlight the park, especially at the entrance area, highlight the park and great visibility. And it's going to become even more of a star in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to applaud everyone who worked on this committee and all the people who came out for the public comment event. It was very well-attended. There were a lot of ideas that were thrown back and forth that night and it appears to me that you really listened to what the people had to say and have incorporated those changes in the final recommended concept. So, hats off. I think this is exciting. Robins Island is seeing additional traffic just over the last few years with the Rockin' Robins events and the Destination Playground. And it's exciting to see the families and people out there and this is just going to continue to grow that excitement. So, I think you've done a fabulous job and want to thank everyone involved.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Elvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Now, I'm understanding that this is going to be a phased-in project. We're not going to do it all, all at once. So, that's, that's good. And the reason I bring that up, I got a little feedback or pushback on reducing the size of the beach. So, just if we can monitor that, see if it, because of the changes, things get more use and all of a sudden the beach is being utilized. So, just something to think about as we're going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a great comment. And I think that Councilmember Elvarado, the beach, we've shrunk it because it's, right now, it's a very large space. And I think that if that beach were to be utilized heavily and over time, I think part of that really depends on the water quality of the lakes. And if the water quality of the lakes improves and the beach becomes a highlight of the park, which I hope it will, and I think it will, this is a master plan. One of the things we did with it is we made it so that it could be amended and it could be modified. So, there's room to expand the beach if needed. That would be a great, a great problem to have or a great issue. I wouldn't call it a problem, I'd call it an opportunity.
It's great. Thank you.
And Councilmember Elvarado, you make, you make a good point. I mean, this is not a plan that we're going to do next year or whenever. I mean, this is a plan, a living document. And when we hope to say that... And when we hope to say that, you know, you know, the amphitheater piece is one piece that you really don't see identified real clearly here, but the conversation about that is more towards the west side, kind of up by the pier. And that would then probably cause us to have to do a little bit more parking out there as well. And so it's something that can be built on. And the other thing that we did is that we looked at things and we said, we don't want this here at Robins Island. So we looked at things we wanted and things we didn't want. And as you said, Councilmember Plowman, you know, we kind of vetted that before it came to the council. And so that's how that was presented. So Stuart, I also want to commend you on a job well done. Your firm is amazing in the work that you did with us. So we were kind of bouncing around, and we weren't sure how we were going to land, but you landed the ship perfectly. So we appreciate that. So thanks for your good work, and we really looked for the implementation piece, and that will be coming down the pipe soon. So any of the council members have questions? Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, thank you.
You bet. Now, on our regular agenda, we have Celebrate the Light of the World. You can stick around for that if you wish, or you can leave, and we can give you a report on it. So that you don't get home at midnight. So it's up to you, your choice.
Well, I appreciate that. I have a senior in high school who has this senior night tonight, so if you don't mind, I'm going to duck out to get to that event as well.
Well, hurry back.
Yeah, thank you.
But if you're driving a Highway 12, drive the speed limit.
If you have to, yes.
Exactly, so, yes.
Always, yeah.
Yes.
All right, let me see if I can get this out.
So Councilmember Christensen had called me earlier this morning. He's going to be late. He hopes to be here for the regular meeting, and he hopes to get into part of the work session as well, but he's going to run a little bit tight on his time. He's coming back from an appointment he had in the cities. Next is the MINDOT Community Roadside Landscape Partnership Program. Mr. Christensen.
Judy, is there an agenda here? Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, my trust is the form that describes a resolution and a landscape partnership program with MINDOT. Superintendent Manzer and myself met with one of the designers of this, of this program with MINDOT, and, not designers of the program, rather, but designers of the landscape within this program. And we drove around to the five different "Welcome to Wilmer" signs and got some ideas, and he's currently drawing up some, some concepts for us to view. What this does is allows, or creates a resolution that MINDOT needs to create this design for us. And it basically indicates community support for the desired improvements and authorizes myself as the primary contact person to apply for this funding through MINDOT. Funding is for reimbursement of eligible materials, not to exceed $30,000. And in this particular, this first particular go-around, we would be considering four of the five signs. As the fifth one, if the Wilmer Y project continues, the fifth one will be relocated at that, at the time the highway is relocated anyway, coming in from the, from the west on Highway 12. So in front of you, the request is to adopt the resolution indicating the community's support and desired, for the desired improvements, and authorizing myself to be the primary contact.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How much money does the state have in this program? Is it for every community in the state, or?
Yeah, I believe, Councilmember Fagerly, I think every community is eligible to apply for it. I don't know the total dollars that MINDOT has allowed or earmarked for this program. It's first come, first served. If we apply and are granted the money, then we're guaranteed that amount of money, this up to $30,000, for this particular year, cycle, or however they, I don't know the details of the program itself. I just know the dollar amounts that we're eligible for.
So if we do get it, it's just for landscaping, you'll keep the signs the same?
We've also got some concepts that we've been kicking around and looking at and kind of, kind of vetting out a little bit to tweak the signs slightly. But in a nutshell, the rock or the brick structure of those signs would remain much the same. We would change the face plate, the plastic, and swap out the lights, and then do a little, you know, beautification or archway above the, above the sign itself.
So no LED lights, or?
I believe that is true. The LEDs behind the sign that's there.
Okay. Because I like the signs now.
You'll like these. I'll show you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Let's come into the working session. What is your timeframe to make application?
You know, this one here, it doesn't have a set date for application. It's until the money's gone on each, on each cycle. We're still at this, at this moment, waiting for the designer, concept designer to come back to us and approve at our level first before we make application to it.
So it's not critical maybe that we move this?
I don't think it is, no. We haven't even seen the design yet, so I would say not necessarily. I think you have a full agenda tonight, so.
Councilmember Elverado.
Thank you for going out there and finding this money. It's pretty exciting. I too like the signs they are, the way they are also. They're awesome. But I'm, I'm also up for change. It's the first thing people see when they come to our community, and if we can improve them and change the lights like they do on the bridges up in the cities, whatever, I think that'd be cool. I don't know if that's part of the concept, but.
At this point, Councilman Elverado, I think anything is part of the concept. Like, say, we haven't seen the design yet, and, and let me, you know, be clear, if you like the sign much the same as it is, most of this money is for the landscape portion anyway. So we can mix and match or pick and choose as, as we start seeing that design come forward.
I just appreciate you being out there and looking for this kind of thing. Thank you.
Okay. At the last meeting, what you had said is that issues like this that aren't real controversial, that appears there's consensus, you would like to take a motion to forward that, and then that would then go on the consent agenda. Is there someone that would like to make a motion to do that, or not? Councilmember Nelson?
I'd like to make first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
Okay. I too like the signs the way they are, and I think also that we need to remember that the community marketing dollars paid for those signs and designed them. And so it is not, was not the city's money that built those signs. So before we change them, I think we need to be aware that that was a community project with that. So I just want to make sure that we will have input into what those signs look like.
Yeah, Councilmember Nelson, I can assure you that it's not going to be done in a vacuum. There'll be plenty of opportunity to comment on whatever that concept looks like.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to move it on.
I think we could make motions at the work session.
We, at the last meeting, we said that we wanted to now start making motions, and that if we made a motion, then that would put it on the consent agenda. Am I not correct, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's certainly possible that the council reached that consensus, and I didn't make a note of that. I did not make that change in the resolution that establishes your work sessions.
Rescind your motion.
At this point, I think you're looking for consensus, and staff will take note that it should go on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And if the council thinks I missed something, please let me know.
Exactly, that's what I thought you meant. Thank you, Sean, for your good work. Keep up the good work. I have one question for you. I didn't get a chance to ask a question, so now I will.
Usually, thank you means go ahead and leave.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. Thank you and get out of here, right?
Right, exactly.
What did it cost to redo the sign on the north side when we did that a couple of years ago after it got hit by the car? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I could pull that pretty easily, but, you know, of course, it was insurance paid that one, and I could pull that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Might be nice to have that when you come back.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have public comment. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak and address the council during the work session? Seen and hearing done, we'll bring it to the next steps for the community ed and rec agreement. Mr. Holland.
Mr. Mayor and council, last week, the school district and one of the school board's meeting made a motion to dissolve the CER agreement with the city. Consequently, I met with the school superintendent, I was just trying to pull up my calendar I met with him last week, well, the very next day, and we talked about that, the consequences of that decision. They are currently in the process right now of hiring a community education director, minus the recreation portion. After speaking with him, he made the recommendation that the school district would like to move this forward this year. They would not like to wait until the end of the contract, which expires next year. And with consulting with Steve Brizendine, it was their recommendation that we agree to dissolve by September 1st. This would allow the summer programming with the current personnel to continue over the summer, and then also at the same time, give us both 90 to 120 days here to make the adjustments going into the fall. So tonight, we, what I'm asking for is some direction from the mayor and the council on what you would like to do. I think I put in the car that one option is that we could say we do not want to dissolve the contract and that we want them to live up to the terms. That's one option. The second option would be that we agree to dissolve the contract and allow myself to negotiate that with Dr. Holmes and bring it back to the council for your signature and approval. The third thing is we could try to make a ploy to change their mind and approach the school board and the school superintendent about that. But that's basically the three responsive, you know, next steps that I can see. I'm sure there's maybe something else, but that's the question I posed before the council tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Mesky, have you, do you have any thoughts on this, seeing that this is kind of a labor issue?
Well, I was going to think about some things to say, but if you want me to start, I would say maybe another alternative could be that the mayor maybe form another ad hoc committee that specializes in what a separation looks like and a reimplementation, because it sounds as if we're not part of this plan anymore, if this is not the way we wish to proceed, we have to do a whole lot of reevaluation. All that on the council, meaning later there's a position that is out there for the community center slash director person to be hired. At this point, I don't think we're in any position to be talking about that position either, until we reevaluate exactly what this separation will look like and what the reimplementation will look like, because we have a lot of needs that are going to have to be met. So since you asked me, I'd say I would go with a third alternative is that perhaps we form our own committee to talk about how that's going to look as a suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, in regard to the position in question, the separation is not expected until September 1st if we would go that route. I think we've already heard that we really need this individual at the community center. For us to put that position off until something is done, I mean, let's be honest, that's one of the reasons we're here, is because the school felt we could not make a decision, and we were paralyzing them, and, and that type of behavior was not workable. So I think to not move forward with that position just reinforces the fact that we're not able to make a decision and move forward. Go ahead.
I wasn't suggesting that we don't move forward at some point. It's on the agenda tonight. We have no idea what the needs are going to be now that this separation is in place. That job description was written prior to the separation request from the school board. So I'm suggesting that we reevaluate exactly what that position needs to be. I don't think there should be anybody around this table that doesn't think that that's actually a critical position. I'm saying the game just changed, and I think we need to know exactly what is the new game we're playing, because right now, I think we don't.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would agree with Councilmember Mesky that we, some sort of task force would probably be important to do. I think in the meeting that, that we were at, there was also a conversation that if this were to dissolve, that perhaps there still were some services that could be contracted for, not under a true agreement, but things like scheduling or those types of things. And I do not know whether that is something the school is interested in or not. With regards to the position that's on our agenda tonight, the concern that I had from, from that, it basically says that that position will be hired and report to the community ed and rec director, and that it is not their intent to hire a community ed and rec director. I think Mr. Holland made that statement too, that they are going forward with a community education director. And so I think that job description does need to be reviewed, and also with the piece that's been added, if I understand correctly, there's an hour and a half to two hours a day that is looking at being contracted with Lutheran Social Service. And so I think that changed the concept, and also I think the information in that job description is entitled enrichment, and I'm not sure that that fits under where we're going until we know that too. So I would be supportive of some sort of task force to assist in, in going forward to determine what our needs are and how that might work with what the school wants.
Councilmember Schwantis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really struggling with this. The reason we are in this situation is because of the micromanaging. I would like to see the, if there's going to be a separation, I'd like to see the administrator take the lead on that and allow him to bring in those individuals that he feels have the knowledge and the skills to be able to move this separation forward, if that's the route we need to take. But I think to have a task force will only reinforce, again, the problems that we have, because not only was it the council's indecision that caused the situation, but it was, it was, I mean, I, I really struggle with what we make public here in regard to this, but it was behavior at the meetings and the discussions that were taking place that caused this separation. And that is not right. And we do not need to cause greater consternation as we try and make this separation as effective as and efficient as possible. We are going to be spending $200,000, $300,000 to, because of this separation that, that never needed to be spent by our, our community. We are going to have less services than we did before, and this agreement was the right thing to do, and this is the wrong thing to be doing. And I, I think that the micromanaging and the personal motivation that was at the table that got us where we are today, it can't be there going forward. And so I strongly recommend that it would be the administrator leading it and taking care of business.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with councilperson Schwantis. I think we should plead mercy and ask that we continue, and we'll replace our liaison person from the city to the park board and community ed.
May I speak?
Hmm?
I, I'm sorry that people feel this way. I am the liaison. The concern that I have had is that we were brought an agreement that the school said was going to change how we were going to function, and we never acknowledged that the new agreement was not going to be the same as the last. It was not my intent for this to be taken apart completely, but the fact was very It was not my intent for this to be taken apart completely, but the fact was very loud and clear that the direction that the school agreement, the new agreement was, was that it was programming only. And in asking questions, both privately and publicly, we were never willing or to able to have a conversation about what that meant. Who's going to do the million dollar park plans? Who's going to manage the buildings? Who's going to take care of those things? And whether you agree or disagree, those were real things that the school had conveyed, we, they were no longer going to participate in. If we want to go back and ask, then we still need to clarify. I asked for clarification of the organizational chart and our FTEs. If you look at the dollars, we put close to $1.5 million into the different functions that have run through that organization. I think there is a way to do this. I was not pleased with it. We did not follow through with the meetings that were supposed to be scheduled to talk about what the options were. And so, I'm sorry for that. I'm sorry those meetings didn't take place. But I am not going to apologize for the questions that I asked, because it was very clear to me, from the role that I was at as a liaison, that this organization needed to change for the betterment of the community. And that's what was stated at the school table and it should have been stated here versus we're just going to sign this agreement, we don't have time to deal with it, and we'll figure what we're going to do in the next six to 12 months. And what we want to do now, the council needs to figure that out. But I'm sorry that we are where we are, but I will not apologize for the things that still need to be done with this organization. It's our goal to have the best recre, it should be our goal, to have the best recreation for the city of Wilmer. And the school wants the same goal, to have the best community education. And how we do that, I think, is up to us at this point in time.
I attended the meeting last Monday night and the school board wants this to be an amicable separation. They don't want it to be highly publicized, they don't want it to be highly scrutinized and I do agree with the fact that we need to allow our administrator and the superintendent to get together and bring us a plan on how this separation would look. One of the school board members said, one of the things we don't know is what we don't know, simply because this organization has been in place for over 18 years. And so, we're not going to know what's missing until we start tearing it apart. And I don't mean that literally ripping it apart, I mean disseminating it and peeling it back layer by layer, very carefully to make sure we're doing what's best for the I think that we're in a situation here, you know, what's being requested is that we allow the city administrator to work with the superintendent. And one of the ideas is what Councilmember Mesky has suggested, another idea is what Councilmember Fagerly has suggested, another Councilmember Schwantas has suggested. So we've got ideas on what we can bring to the table. We can get the separation agreement made, but then how do we rebuild that? The separation agreement will be the easy part. It's putting it all back together so that it's seamless to our constituents and it's cost-effective in that we get that done in a manner that people understand it and people understand that, you know, we're working collaboratively. I mean, we have a lot of agreements with the school district currently that work just fine. This thing was on the rails for quite some time. I had a constituent talk with me yesterday at length about this, probably about 20 minutes, and some concerns that she had observed even in 2002. And so, you know, some of the things we're talking about aren't something that just came up. So, I think that we need to move this forward. I think that, you know, the reason where we're at today is that we got too deep in the weeds. There's no two ways around it. And that was clearly stated at the school board meeting, that our inability to make a decision is what put us in this situation. So, and they needed to move forward. They had hoped to have the person on board, working beside Mr. Brizendine for some time for OJT, and they felt that they needed to proceed forward.
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Osmus.
First, Mr. Mayor, thank you for saying that. I think that added some clarity, because I believe that I'm probably in agreement with what Councilmember Schwantas was saying. There's two different things. There is a separation and then there is planning for the future. And I guess I was already jumping to the planning of the future stage. No matter which of those two you talk about, it has to be very clear in the discussions here on the separation piece, that pieces that have been asked for are on this table many times about costs to different aspects, have to be laid out very clearly as we start approaching the planning stage of how to renegotiate those things or how we're going to deal with it. Because I mean, I heard some numbers thrown out here that I don't know where they've come from, of $200,000 to $300,000 loss. I have no idea, because we've never seen those. I want to, we have to have those numbers regardless in both the separation, so we can plan for whatever that new figure looks like. But I think I'm in agreement with that. If we move forward with the separation as proposed here and then move to a planning task force, I think that might be the right way to move.
Councilor Osmus.
I didn't really have my hand up, but I'll comment.
Well, I thought I seen you moving your hand up. I apologize.
I think I was, I was deep in thought of, I'm just, I'm disappointed, disillusioned that this happened. And it's going to be very complex with the positions that we're going to need to hire and I feel, I feel bad for the community and rec employees that are now in limbo, who are probably going to lose their jobs, have to reapply if they wanted a job. When we have to hire those positions, it's, I have to believe it was very complex 18 years ago, when they put the two together and it's going to take some work. And that, the ripple effect, is I also think of going into the city office building. Now we have different office needs then, possibly, that would go into that project as well. So, it's, it's a lot to take in and we're going to have, it's going to take some meetings to unravel.
We need to provide direction to the administrator. Would we like the administrator to work with the superintendent on this or would we like, as Councilmember Fagerly stated, to go back and see if we can take one more swing at keeping it together? I was in attendance at the meeting. I think that's a long shot. I think that's a real long shot. It certainly does not hurt to ask.
Councilor Mesky.
I'll get back to it. If those values come through of what the monetary expense will be to this community after the superintendent and city administrator take a look at this and they say, do you understand the added expense is going to be X, Y, and Z, that that may perhaps be the time that you may want to look at, maybe a renegotiation with the school board. But we don't know that at this point, because if it's going to add any kind of expenses and lose services, the public should be outraged. But I don't think we know the answer to that and we won't know it until we sit down and start talking brass tacks.
I would just say one thing, that, you know, I put that as an option. It's a slim option and what I mean by that was, the school superintendent asked me to emphasize that they plan on hiring their new director, possibly before Memorial Day. And the reason he wanted me to emphasize that is that they're moving forward. They cannot wait two more weeks, they cannot wait another month. They are hiring someone, they already have applications submitted, from what I understand, and they've already done a cursory review and there's several people that are qualified for what their needs are. So, I think if I went to the school superintendent tomorrow and said, you know, can we wait another week or two? The answer is, they've already moved on. But it always is a possibility, so I didn't want to eliminate that proposal.
And one of the things that was proposed at the meeting to just support what our city administrator is saying is that there was a question asked at the school board, can we wait till the council meets on Monday, see what their thoughts are and then come back? And they said, we don't have two weeks, two weeks to wait. This was not one of their priorities, to work on this. And their priority is education and they do a very good job of that and they're ready to move that forward, so. I'm not seeing real clear consensus. The only thing that I'm hearing is there's consensus that, I'm not sure what it is. So.
Mayor, I would just like to say that, you know, Dr. Holmes and I talked a couple weeks ago about the, you know, dissolving, what that would look like, and I believe I shared that document of that meeting with you all, of our conversation. I've had conversations with our current CER director and how that split would look and I've also talked with our HR director and I think that my recommendation would be to allow me to go ahead and proceed with the dissolvement agreement and at the same time, working with the CER director, the HR director, our public works staff. I've talked to our public works director, Gary Manzer, and we've talked about those activities already to a certain extent. So I think we already have a framework, a starting point, I guess would be the best way to say it, that we would be ready to sell, if the council wants to put an ad hoc committee together, I think within probably three to four weeks, we'd be prepared to present them with something for their consideration.
Are we good with that?
I don't know if "good with that" is the right word, but I think it's the way to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the situation is kind of like a train coming with a car stalled on the tracks. You ain't going to stop the train before it hits the car, so we got to push the car off the tracks, so to speak. Let the train go by, fix up the car and then, and then we can put it back together on the tail end. But we got to do what we got to do for right now to get the, to get the programming rolling, because that's, that's going to take place anyways. So, if it's going to take place anyways, we might as well put our best foot forward and start planning what the tail end is going to look like when we got to restructure. So, I'm in favor of that.
Councilor, I apologize, I seen you raise your hand and I called in Councilman Plom first.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea of giving the city administrator the latitude to move this thing forward. I think we've got to simultaneously be thinking about getting somebody on board rather expeditiously to take on the role of the city's part in this as we move forward. We've got 90 days and we want to have somebody on the ground, ready to roll. So I think we got to think about that also. I'm a little frustrated with the process. I think early on, we received documentation asking us about how we felt about the cooperation of the two entities. And I know my feedback was positive. I thought it was sending to the community that you've got two government agencies, bodies that realize the importance of cooperation and all of a sudden, through confusion and frustration, they step away. Life isn't easy and sometimes we have to work together to get through it, but I'm a little disappointed that it's gone this route. And I agree with Mr. Mesky, that the public should be a little upset, that, and at both sides, not just us, but at both sides. So, I'll give Mr. Holland the task of moving us forward in a positive direction and we can go from there. Go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate how good this agreement was and the good work that we were able to accomplish for our community. We had some bumps and bruises, but at the end of the day, we now need to separate with a positive fashion, not a negative fashion, and we need to look at what's best for our community long haul. We can get this done, we have the right people at the table to make it happen and we just need to rely on our staff to bring back a recommendation. I'm in agreement with, so I'm through the separation piece now and now I'm to the rebuilding piece. And I'm in agreement with Councilmember Mesky, that we need to have a group of council members that work with the administrator to set that direction. We got a little hinky, is that a word? College professor?
In Minnesota.
In Minnesota it is. So, we need to get a group of council members that work with the administrator to provide that direction, so that he doesn't go in a direction that we're not comfortable with and gets too far down the path. And so, I'd really like, if you're interested in assisting with that, to get in touch with Mr. Holland to help with that process. And, you know, I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't know if you all agree with that or if you don't agree with that, but I think we need to put some people at the table to start rebuilding this. I don't think we have to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. Our public works staff does a tremendous job. I received an email the next morning from a concerned community citizen and said, you know, turn it all over to Public Works, they can get it done. And so, Public Works, you have a lot of confidence in the community. So, but that's not, that's not, that's not the answer. I mean, we need to build the team and, you know, I've met with Mr. Holland many times about building the team that he needs and he has to have to build this community and move this community forward in a positive fashion. This is giving him another opportunity to do that, to build a team that can support the vision that he has for our community and how we impact that. And, you know, we've had cursory conversations, but nothing in depth, but Councilmember Nelson mentioned it a little bit ago, we need a project manager. And we have a lot of projects on the table and, you know, you can't put that all in the back of the city administrator and you can't put it on the back of staff that are already overloaded. And so, by doing some internal restructuring, maybe we can make that happen. I have confidence that we get that done. And I think that at the end of the day, it's not going to look the same, but it's going to function seamlessly for our community. So I have a lot of confidence that we can get there, it's just going to be a little bit bumpy getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it my understanding then that they are withdrawing from the agreement?
Correct. Yes.
Our agreement with them says that either party may withdraw from this agreement upon a 12-month written notice to the other party. So, is it 12 months that they're taking or is it just done now?
They would like to be done September 1st, mutually agreed upon September 1st. So that's where the discussion is taking place now.
Okay, so that was discussed earlier?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Holland, do you understand?
I think I did, yes. I will get with Dr. Holmes tomorrow and then report back to the council and then those that are interested in being part of the solution, then we will get together.
Part of the restructuring?
Yes.
Correct. Are we all good with that? Okay, we don't need to take any action on that. Do we need to take action on that? I mean, during the regular meeting I'm talking.
I don't believe so, Mayor. I think you had the discussion and have developed a consensus and I think the administrator has his direction.
I was just wondering if because they took direction, do we have to take direction? But we don't need to, right?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next is discussion of the additional work session on a monthly basis. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, at our last meeting, we talked about having an additional work session in the month and so I had staff do an informal polling of the council and I think she did it twice. And basically, what we're looking at is... And basically, what we're looking at is, um, it was agreed upon that whenever there's a fifth Monday of the month, then that would be the third work session. So we'll have two work sessions at the regular meetings, at the first and third Mondays. If there is a fifth Monday, then that will be the third Monday, or third work session. I'm gonna talk slow so that everybody understands, and so then, but if there's not a fifth Monday, the question-
That's just that Missouri brawl.
Yeah, I wanna slow her down. So if we do not have that, the question poised was what day should we do it and what week? She got the results back, it was not a hundred percent, um, um, participation, but when you look at the, the number of people, uh, from the council that selected this, um, the second Monday, it was one, two, three, and one person was, um, agree, agreeable with all, so, um, that is four votes for the second Monday. There was one vote for the fourth Monday, and then, of course, you could count that other person that would go either way also as the fourth Monday. So the first, um, day and day of the week goes to the second Monday, the second would be the fourth Monday. There was also one vote for Thursday of the third week. So what I, with those results, um, I guess I'm looking for a consensus, um, from the council, um, to say that, um, beginning next month in June, that we will have a work session on the second Monday of the month, in conjunction with our other two work sessions.
I'm good with the second Monday, but I thought that was separate from the fifth Monday. I thought the fifth Mondays were going to be saved if there were special projects or those types of things, that the second Monday was just gonna be added.
Oh.
I don't know if anybody else thought that, but that's what I thought.
That was not my understanding.
Let me try that again. There'd be three work sessions in a month. If there's a fifth Monday, that's the third one.
Yes.
If there isn't a fifth Monday, it's the second Monday.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the City Hall discussion, and what are our next steps? Mr. Holland.
Are we done with that?
Did we agree with that, or I'm just-
Well, I don't know that the, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get agreement because your people aren't gonna be able to be here. I mean, you have to go with consensus. You had four people that said they could do that, that's what you have to do.
Okay, Mayor, I just want a clarification, thank you.
When is that starting?
Chair.
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 City Hall discussion, next steps, Mr. Holland.
Mayor and Council, so, um, a few weeks ago, we had a, a meeting with, uh, the Wilmer Utilities Board, and we talked, uh, about the discussion of having a, a City Hall and a new, uh, Wilmer's Utility Administrative Building, possibly slash shop, uh, at the same site, and we had everyone participate in that discussion, we talked about the different options and so forth. At the conclusion of that meeting, it was decided that the, um, uh, the city and the city utilities would not, uh, go forth with plans to working together for a joint site. So that was, if you'll recall, um, that was a, a recommendation that we do that prior to going forward. Up to this point, the building committee, uh, we had been working with our architect, and we had, uh, several meetings discussing, uh, the scope of the project, the cost of the project, different locations of the project, um, possibly buying existing structures or buying, um, uh, just barren parcels, should we build it downtown, should we build it outside of, uh, the downtown area? So that's why we, we put a hold on that, and so now we have reached the conclusion that we're not going to be doing the joint building. So my question tonight is, where do we go forward? And so this afternoon, I called, uh, Mr. Ingean, and I asked him if he would mind coming tonight and, uh, making that proposal, uh, and basically repeating our conversation this afternoon, so, Mr. Ingean, if you could come up, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Council. The, uh, as the mayor, as, uh, like mentioned, we, the building committee hasn't met for several months, and one way forward would be to reconvene the building committee and just look at where we are and how we go ahead. What, one would be to, you know, look at the characteristics of an ideal site, what are we looking for? We had a list before, but we'd re, relook at that, maybe we can put some values on some of the characteristics. Of all the characteristics, some are more important and some are less, and that would be one thing we could look at. Also, maybe list and discuss the assumptions that go into selecting a site. We wanna start the project by looking at the big picture, and, you know, we, the details we work out. We have also, in addition to what was presented to the council the last time, is, is the start of describing the program, of all the details that happen inside. That'll, but, but I think to make a decision, it's simpler to focus on the site, where will it be? I think all, I think we can come up with multiple sites in a city that have enough space to meet the kinds of needs that, that the site has. And so with the committee, we would select, we'd start with the sites that we have, maybe try to eliminate some, maybe we add some, uh, and then put values on how important they are, maybe, and then you could theoretically rate a site, rank a site. They can be debated, and these rankings are, are not concrete. There are a lot of things that you don't know until you spend a lot of money. One would be soil borings. Before you really buy a new piece of land, you're gonna wanna have soil borings, and that can vary hundreds of thousands of dollars, and, but at this stage, you have to have, have a lot of assumptions so that you can get to the major decision of what's ideal, and if something doesn't work out with that site like it's anticipated, maybe you open this, this conversation later. But we need to get to a point where, where we have a, a direction, a consensus of where to go. We'd come back to the council with the recommendation of the building committee, set a community meeting. It was mentioned very strongly that we need a community meeting for input, and that's a very wise approach. A community meeting is better if we have input. If you just set a community meeting and ask them for something, you know, you don't get input back that's really tangible, it's hard to measure, hard to use, but if you come back with information, they can dispute the information, they can agree with it, but then you have a good discussion, and it's valuable thing to come, to come back on. So I think that would be the approach. We'd start with setting a facility committee, meeting, and start by looking at what are the ideal characteristics of a site, and try to see what is really important of that, and that's a discussion, and maybe we can numerically put values on it. One question that always comes up is money and cost, and some sites, we might be able to have multiple city functions for different money, and, and in my mind, that's looking at, as, as a positive opportunity. The projects could be different, but that, but it, that makes it very difficult. We could use appraised values of sites is a simple way, uh, you know, parking is a whole series of things that, that get variables. So coming up with a bottom line dollar at this stage, there's a lot of assumptions that go into that. I think we might be able to say the function of the city hall, programs is the same for all the sites, building the structure wouldn't necessarily be different. The variable might be soil conditions and some site. Ability of parking is another variable, but we could rank it that way. And I, I think, uh, we, we can come up with some values that certain characteristics are more important, possibly, they can be contested, but, uh, that would be some, a piece of factual information that you can dispute, but the other, it would show, it could show that, uh, what's important.
Okay, Council, um, we had our meeting with the municipal utilities, there was some conversations there that we should continue trying to move the project forward. Uh, there was not consensus as to whether it should be located downtown or someplace else. This may be a good item for our first, um, extra work session, where we could delve into this deeper. You know, there was some conversation of do we even proceed at this point? And so as the council, you know, we've got questions that we have to answer, and we have to decide how we wanna move it forward. I will remind the council that this was one of our priority items come out of the retreat, is that we needed to address the working conditions that our employees have, and I've had a lot of comments, as I'm sure all of you have as well, from the public. Um, and, you know, you've got people saying, yes, stay downtown, no, don't stay downtown, uh, so there's a lot, a lot of conversation happening, and the conversation is good, anytime you have conversation, it's good. And a lot of times, we think that when you have the conversation, well, that's just, they're contradicting what I'm saying, and that's not necessarily true. So, um, you know, I'm not sure that we're gonna get through this conversation today unless there's direction you wanna give to the administrator. Uh, do we wanna set up another, uh, group to tackle this? Do you want the same group that has worked on it in the past to continue to work on it? Um, you know, we, we brought you numerous suggestions, and a lot of them were contested as to why they wouldn't work versus how we could make them work. Um, and so, and again, these are conversations, we're just talking about it. And so what, what, what you as a council wish to do? Do we wanna have it as the next work session item, or Councilmember Mesky?
I would think that's a very good idea. Um, thank you, Mr. Ingean, for, for the presentation, and I agree with actually everything you said. I think, however, that those questions that sit of downtown, not downtown, multiple purpose versus single purpose, that's where some of the conversations about having community input in the front was, do they even wanna approach something like that? What you're talking about is very different, and yours makes much more sense. We have to have some of those decisions made here before we can consider that, and so a work session where we knew that that's what we're gonna talk about, is it, are we ready, would we move out of downtown, would we not? What do we see in a city hall, or do we see it as a slash city hall, a community center, all these other multiple purposes? All those ideas have been batted around, and we've never come up with a clear purpose. And I remember when we were talking about location, I, I thought it was odd that without knowing what the building's gonna do, uh, to come up with a, with a location, but if we can say it's gonna be, this is important to the council, is that it's to be in a particular place and it's gonna protect, do a particular function, then starting with a location makes complete sense, and I like the idea of how you propose to move forward with that. So to me, I would think a next work session makes sense.
Yeah, and just, uh, just as a point of clarifications, we did, we did have five priority areas that, that the committee addressed and brought back, and it's just that, you know, we just couldn't get any synergy building wrong. Councilmember Christensen followed by Plomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally think this should be put on the back shelf for now. This council has got lots in front of us. Civic Center, Community Center, we've had a group come before us, uh, wanting a half percent sales tax with fifty million dollars for three projects. Uh, we gotta finish the parks, we got Robins Island to look at, I mean, we have a lot on our plate, and, and to sit and think about a new city hall, where to put it while we're doing this, I mean, we're just confusing ourselves. I, I think we have a lot on there, and the utilities did the smart thing, they also have a lot on their plate, they said, we're gonna push it out two years, to probably twenty twenty or beyond. They also have a lot of spending ahead of them that, uh, is gonna take more public money. So I think, personally, I think we should push ours back one or two years, think about it after we fix some of the problems we already have. Uh, we got maintenance problems we need to do, and, uh, I, I personally haven't heard from anyone in the public that thinks it's a good idea to build a new city hall presently, nobody. And I, I talked to a lot of people in, in my business, um, and nobody said, and we haven't had any public input. And we were, we're talking about having a meeting where we have public input, and I, I would wager to say there would be less than a dozen people that come, and for a couple of reasons. One of them is they don't think we or government listens to them, and they think, uh, what's the use of going? Anyway, that, that, that's my take on it. I think we should, it's not a bad idea, don't get me wrong, but I think we had so much on our plate, we should, uh, let it go for a year or two, when we can think thoroughly about it. Right now, we're, we're not thinking with what we just went through, I mean, our thought process is kinda hampered here. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Plomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will kick back to our strategic planning session where we did, yeah, I think it's a great point to remember that we did highlight this as an item that, that needed to be tackled. Who knows what the next item is gonna be at City Hall in terms of deferred maintenance that costs us a load of money, um, possibly more, you know, exceeding than what it has in the past. We gotta think about things like recruitment and retirements coming up, and, uh, and when those individuals are coming into interview, that's a, a pretty key component there, and I know that some people say, well, it's just aesthetics. Well, guess what? If you miss out on quality individuals for your city, um, based on aesthetics alone, that's pretty sad. The cost, yeah, the cost is, I mean, there is gonna be a cost associated, and I understand how the public is not, um, it's a lot more difficult to get the public excited about a city office building versus a park, because a park, they can drive to and use anytime they want, but the city office building, um, you know, we don't always think of, of the fact that, that is the control center for this city, and how, uh, you know, that building is, is paramount to, you know, to, in terms of the city's functionality, and all the personnel, and all the tasks that are taking place in that building. So there's, there's a lot of importance, it's more than just, uh, uh, I mean, all the fun and recreation and everything like that comes to a grinding halt if we have a building that's falling apart. I think then the key component of, you know, being constituency feedback, we also need to keep in mind that, um, instead of just waiting for an email to show up or a phone call to come in, uh, as, as representatives, it's incumbent on us to actually go out and solicit that, uh, feedback from people, and, um, you know, sometimes it's not always fun when it comes to a, a nuts and bolts item that's not going to be, um, necessarily so glamorous like a, like a, um, you know, a, a community amenity, so to speak, but I consider this a part of infrastructure, because without this building, we don't have, um, an operation center, as I said, so I do think it's important enough to, um, to really go out there and, and quiz people, question people, find out where they're at, and then also explain the importance of it, and, and act as that liaison back to the community. And I think having those conversations, all of us having those conversations with our neighbors and with the different groups and activities that we're in, I think it can kinda help get the message out there, and then any opportunities we have with, you know, local news media outlets and whatnot, it, it will highlight the importance and the necessity to, uh, to address this, and if the feedback then is overwhelming, no, 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 um, you know, then at least we have that feedback. But I, I think, you know, we gotta at least solicit that first, and we can each, each individual here at this, at this table counter, whatever the heck it is, um, can, you know, can take it upon themselves to go do that, and that's our jobs.
Councilmember Mesky.
I think there's, I, I agree with some of Councilmember Christensen's comments, um, we do have a lot on our plate. Uh, however, I'm thinking about something like Robins Island, I remember I was actually against the planning of that, because I said we can't afford to do all of those things, but as you see, I see value now that you put the plan, and you may not be able to do the entire plan now, but at least you have the plan for when those dollars become available, and I think we have kicked around multiple concepts of a city hall and what that would look like. I see this more as the planning stage of what it looks like and what is the priorities of the council moving forward at City Hall. It doesn't necessarily mean when it comes time to actually put the money towards the project, if we don't have that, we have to explore those, those pieces, so I see this as a planning stage to help clarify, and, uh, I do see the value of that planning, so we could do planning, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, Mr. Holland, I think you have your direction. You have your agenda for your next work session. Councilmember Schontis.
Thank you, I'm sorry, uh, for the delay, but would it be possible to send out those priorities, um, the evaluation items that, from the work that the committee had done originally? evaluation items that, from the work that the committee had done originally so that we have a chance to look it over, send it out sooner than later?
They're at the beginning of your, uh, council package. Third or fourth page.
Not those priorities, I'm sorry, the, what we were, the priorities for the new city hall.
The ones that we had at that last meeting or?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could resend that to us, that would be great. Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the West Center Tribune had a poll up and I just went to look to see if it's up there. It's not there now, so I don't know what the results were, but the results were kind of interesting if you looked at those results. Staying downtown was, uh, was about on task with, uh, can't remember what the other one was. Do you remember Shelby, what the other one was?
There were a couple of different ones. There was like four.
There was five different choices, right? Yeah. I just tried to find it here. Oh, I just found it. I'm sorry. There's 243 votes and, um, trying to find it here. So keep the current facility was 35% of the vote. Be located downtown was 29% of vote. Location doesn't matter was 13% of the vote. Combined with municipal utilities was 11% of the vote. Combined with the community center was 9% of the vote and 14 votes or 3% said other. So a total of 424 votes. So there's a little bit of input from the public. Of course, you can't use all of those. So I'm going to try to use the, um, to use the process that we talked about that we were going to use. And Councilmember Mesky, is there anything from Labor that you wish to address this evening?
We're doing.
I'm going to try use, I'm going to try addressing, I know that finance has an agenda item. I'm going to try to address the four committees.
Um, for Labor, I did meet with Sam. We talked about HR Director. We did talk about contracts and the status of those. A report will be coming probably at the next council meeting regarding that. We talked about the position that will be on our agenda and I think we've talked about that, so I may make a motion at that meeting. And then we, this evening at the regular meeting, we have the closed session to discuss the evaluation of the city administrator. So on the Labor end, those were the three issues. So I think I have nothing to come before the working session.
Great, thank you. How about for community development?
Not at this time. I think the next meeting there should be some.
Great. How about Public Works, Public Safety?
I talked to Sean earlier, actually later last week, I think it was. There was three items that we need to discuss, but in the, we don't have time to actually go into them tonight unless you think we do, Sean. Actually four, I added one.
I think the, the one thing I would mention, Mr. Christensen, is that because after working directly with, with Finance Director Okens, we probably going to recommend pulling a portion of the projects that I presented last, uh, last meeting. So people that are, if you're not receiving, um, assessment notices, it's not because we forgot, it's because it's the recommended to, it'll be recommended that we don't do. And I can mention that project now tonight if you think there are a portion of the project.
People may be listening that this is going to affect their street.
It will.
Because we're pulling those on the east side, East Trot.
Yep, the, the stub streets, as we call them, we're going to, we're, I'm going to recommend pulling that portion of the project. It fits into our financial plan and, and, or budget that's available.
Do we want to discuss maybe the Kuzman project?
Probably a larger project. Probably should, we should probably wait on that one if you want. It's up to you.
What's the time do we have, Mr. Mayor? I know we have finance yet too.
Right. Um, yeah, I don't want to cut them short. I just wanted to give each of the four committees an opportunity to speak and we could certainly come back and talk about that issue. But do we know why we're pulling those street projects? I mean, you know, one of the priorities of the council was is to do streets. And we pulled part of our projects last year, now we're pulling projects again?
Well, Sean had a conversation with Mr. Okens, as you said, and maybe you could go into further detail with.
I, yeah, I can. And each year, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd propose and we design and prepare more projects than we can afford in hopes that we can, you know, make, make some magic happen, if you will, if, uh, to use that terminology. But, uh, yeah, this year, what, what happened when we got down to the bottom line and the bonding available and the cash available and the different, uh, revenues for those, for those streets, that was the dollar amount that, uh, that came out and put us back into that, that bonding that we had, that had been approved. The other thing I would like to mention, that changes subjects a little bit, and I would be happy to answer any other questions, but is currently Public Works week, all week. And so, uh, if you see some Public Works guys, wave at them and say hi and thank you.
Well, another item on there was the park equipment update too.
We'll, we'll bring that back to a future, future meeting, work session.
Okay.
And a stormwater update for the Western Intercepts for stormwater. Yep, we'll bring that back.
And maybe we could be first on the list at the next work session?
Yeah, we, uh, we were kind of all convobulated because this agenda had kind of been in process before we agreed at the last meeting. So I'm going to try to get us on schedule and, you know, so that, you know, my plan is the mayor will open the meeting because that's what you've decided. And at that point, it would be passed off to each individual chair. They would then report on their items and then any items that are not under their purview. So as an example, you could potentially take and say city hall discussion and I'll throw Councilmember Bagley under the bus because I want to hear it go bump. I could say, well, that's a, that's a, that's a community development thing. And he would say bump, bump back. So, but anyways, so.
The, the Kuzman drainage project needs to be discussed fairly soon because we're getting on with construction weather and if we have another heavy rain like we had in August two years ago, I mean, that could be devastating over there. So if we could be, again, first on the list, uh, just to get that thing.
Mr. Holland, you got that?
The Kuzman, you'd like to have that on the agenda.
Yeah. Public, yeah, Public Works is the first report out at the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Mr. Okens and I have had a couple of conversations and I, um, he had these reports ready for tonight, so I'm going to let him do that. The one other thing that, um, we did talk about in light of all of the conversations that have gone on with community and rec is just getting information out to the council on those budgets as they exist now. So, and I know that he is working on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll try to keep this brief. This monthly report is basically handling the general operating fund of the city only as well as the waste treatment operating. There are many other funds and accounts that we have discussed and with new council members on, maybe have not had the opportunity to give some history, explain the past councils' policies as far as setting fund balances and those types of, uh, items that with past committees, we were able to go into more detail and explain with. As we presented last month, we tried to do a little different format and we'll be having conversations with Councilman Nelson, not only on format, but content, what other information. There's been some items that we haven't had time to discuss in the areas of policy, reviewing policies like the investment policy, fund balance policy, some of those items where some council members have had questions. So hopefully in our conversations, we can start scheduling some of that discussion as well. Some of the items that we have on the report, and again, I will try to keep it somewhat short, are items that have been discussed tonight and will be discussed in the future. The first one there is a city hall community center. That again was based on the retreat that the council had given the mayor direction to put into his budget. It was planned at that time to bond for it. We have not bonded for it, but we will in, uh, that would be the financing source if and when the council decides to do that. There is no requirement that you have to bond for it this year. You can delay it, but that would be based on your action and when you take it as far as the financing. It, I know there's been some discussion about possibly using some fund balances. And again, that may be warranted after maybe a little bit more discussion about the fund balance policy and where certain levels have been set and the reasons why that they've been set at those levels. Uh, the civic center, you'll notice there, I just want to point out there that, that again was a budgeted item at 2.5. The council has taken action since that time to take a different option. They took option B, which is somewhat higher than that. We haven't had formal discussion or action to amend that budget, but the bonds that are being, uh, coming to the council tonight is, has been set based on that council action, even though there hasn't been formal budgetary action to increase that. That's another item that I hope to speak with Councilman Nelson on as far as processes and budgetary amendments. We do have some that are ready to go primarily for positions and those types of things. And we had planned to bring budgetary amendments to you a couple of times a year. We'll have those discussions. Some of those that we have in, in place right now are being delayed somewhat by collective bargaining agreements and so that we can bring them to you at one time. And so we'll discuss that as well. The pavement, I mentioned last meeting that the 2017 pavement management has actually transpired. We're working through this format and providing the information. That's why you, you actually don't see anything expended at this point because it does have its own separate account that we track those with. I, I did have conversations with the Public Works Director and there's always the final lift on a street project and that project is about 90% complete. So we're working through those mechanics of how those numbers get moved over into this process as well. The other items you see there as far as airport, uh, the nav aids we discussed last month as well, uh, and some overages and, and those overages are covered by the nav aid and the tiling drainage and some of the action the council took from the retreat to reallocate some funds from the airport and the concession stand at the Orange Field. Amphitheater in Robins Island, we have projected schedules and budgets there, but again, are waiting for action by the council and, and further plans and those types of discussions to take place. Those are actually funded with third party planned participation from the amphitheater in Robins Island is the legacy grant from the state of Minnesota. So we'll have to work through the, the logistics of that moving forward. The second page, the handout that I, I gave you is just basically of the capital. I'm kind of going through the, the PowerPoint presentation. But we did converse with the waste treatment superintendent. Those projects are in the works, just not due to construction timing and those types of things have not come into our office yet for payment on a lot of those, a lot of those projects. The vehicles you see there are, are pretty much scheduled. Again, it's a timing issue of when, when the bills are actually coming in. I talked with the police chief today on the squad cars. I believe they're ordered, they just have not been billed at this point. And so it's kind of in transition for that. The third page, as far as the capital items, one of the items asked about was the playground equipment and it was asked at the last meeting as well. There were really three items for playground equipment that had been approved by the council. One was the reallocation of dollars from the Orange concession stand that was based at the retreat. Along with that, from in the treat, there was $40,000 allocated to the Miller Park project. And then there was $100,000 in the, in the budget for this 2018 CIP. The only items that have been purchased are the rice, or the playground equipment that was reallocated from the Orange Field, Miller Park. And the $100,000 in conversations are still in the works. And then there's, uh, some install costs that are, are quoted, but not contract for those three units that were purchased that came before the council and the council authorized purchases because there was a, a deadline to get those purchases in order to take advantage of a large grant that was available. The other items you see there, there's a slight overage on the mechanic shop, the lift. And again, those Rice Park, Miller Park and the playground equipment, uh, reports have been given to administration and will be discussed possibly at the committee meeting or further discussion as those projects are winding down and final numbers come in. Hey, Councilmember Mesky, have you got a question?
Just a question on that $100,000 for playground equipment. Since it has not been encumbered, we're not spent yet, are we waiting for direction or are we?
I cannot answer that question. Administrator Holland has an answer for that.
The short answer is no, that we're not waiting on direction. It's already been decided. He's already picked out the, uh, the number of units and then the number of, of swings and teeter totters and all those type of things. They've all been selected and it's now, uh, where we're at in the order process, I don't know for sure. But it's already, everything's already been pre-selected and priced and is in the process of being delivered this summer and working with conjunction with Public Works. They've already got it in their work schedule, uh, where those swings and, you know, we did an inventory of where we pulled out those items and all of that's going to be replaced this summer. So it hasn't been encumbered yet, but it has already been earmarked.
That'd be, that would be very good news to share, I think, at some point when it comes in, so people know where that's going.
It's on schedule to be delivered, installed for the end of the summer.
And one thing I might just want to make.
I'll, I'll just point out, not all equipment that was replaced is going to be replaced. So not, not all swings that were pulled out, just the ones that were ordered are going to be installed.
One, one additional item I'd just like to mention and clarification is again, timing on issues, if, uh, if there's been no council action, our office would not pick up on if things are ordered if it hasn't been communicated and, and recorded as far as contracts and those types of things. So there may be timing issues as well as, and I'll talk a little bit about that and some of the revenues as well, when we're talking about leisure services. So again, these reports, uh, the main report that we will be giving to the council and having further discussion as the mayor and I and administrator meet to put together the budget calendar will be coming up, uh, next month in the month of June. And then you have six months of operating, so. The fourth page.
Another question on that page. We asked about resurfacing the pool bottom at the last meeting. We never heard anything back on that. Is that being done this fall or? We asked for clarification on that.
It's still on track for this fall.
On, on the fourth page of the, of the revenues, you'll see there again, timing is somewhat an issue. We talked about the general property taxes and the local government aid. Those are, those are timing issues that affect the cash flow and somewhat fund balances. Building permit revenues are one item that we had discussions with our rating agency on as far as the, the level of activity and the amount of activity of economic development that's happening here in Wilmere. They were very impressed and, and we'll have a little bit of discussion about that and talk about that at your council meeting when we go over the rating and some of the stuff talked about there. The other items that, uh, the fifth page there on page 50 of your electronic version are the general government sections. If a person was right on, and on track, you'd be at about 33%. Again, some of these items will have fluctuations once collective bargaining agreements are settled and we have budgetary amendments coming to the council in order to fund those, those settlements. The second group of general operating expenditures are basically public safety you see there in Public Works. A lot of these categories are segregated and into these categories for reporting purposes statewide. And so when we report to the state auditor, Wilmere, Mankato, all the, all of the communities can kind of compare how much is being spent in these general categories. A lot of them, Public Works referred to that as road and bridge. We have historically always given the department directors every month a printout of their, their budgets. We have just initiated a new process, uh, this month where we will be meeting with them monthly as well, administrator and I, to discuss any kind of concerns they may have, concerns that we see are coming up. And, and so it gives that opportunity to, to have direct conversations about those as well. On, on page, um, 52 of your electronic version is the cultural and recreational areas. You'll see there leisure services is only a You'll see there leisure services is only at 16%. That is a procedural item that will be one of the items that we'll ask to have discussed as far as the school district doing some accounting and then sending a report to our office to record that. That has historically been one to two months in arrears, and so we'll ask to have that updated before we get too far into the discussion.
Question on that. The schools fiscal year is like June through July or July through June or the school year. Where does, where do we fit in for when we pay them in their fiscal year?
Our fiscal year is calendar year, and they adjust for the leisure services to that calendar year on their monthly billings. So their costs and leisure services, the present agreement where we pay for 50% of the director and 100% of two recreational supervisors and one clerical position is billed on a calendar year based on.
Okay.
So it fits to our sequence, and we have conversations between their finance office and our office. On page 54, I'm sorry, 53 is the waste treatment. Again, that is a, a timing issue that we work with the municipal utilities where they collect the wastewater fees, and there is a delay, and they're sending it to us by one to two months as well. They have 45 days to turn that over to us, and we work closely with them on that as well. So those numbers are always in arrears by at least one month. And the final page that we have for you there in electronic version is our investment portfolio. We have had conversations with a local lending institution where we are increasing the amount that we can get for interest, and I mentioned that at our last monthly report as well. Maybe we've got a good working relationship with all the lending institutions in the community, and some of that will have, we can discuss as well at the council meeting when we talk about the bonds. But again, we have had conversations about the content and the, and the format, and we'll be working on different things to try to improve that as much as we can and provide the information to the council that you want.
Thank you. Okay. No, I think we're past our time. Need to adjourn.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, we'll adjourn to the next meeting.